Notice is hereby given of a regular town meeting of the Town of Anthony Council to be held on Monday, January 22, 2024 at 5:30 PM in Town Hall, 401 Log Cat Drive, Anthony, Texas, 7981. For the purpose of considering the following agenda items. All agenda items are subject to action. The Town of Anthony Council reserves the right to meet in a closed session for consultation with attorney on any agenda item should it be a rise in applicable pursuant authorization by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The current time is 5:33.
Okay, Mayor, I'm going to go with forum. I'm going to begin with Councilwoman Stevens.
Yeah.
Councilman Weeks.
Yep.
Mayor Turner.
President.
Mayor Cortez Alphado.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotes.
Here.
And Councilman Chavez.
Here.
We have a forum.
Excellent. Now we pledge allegiance.
United States of America, absolutely positive for which it stands. One nation, under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.0, public comments and receipt of petitions.
So nobody contacted me for public comment and nobody in the audience would like to do public comments? No.
Okay, excellent. 5.0, approve the minutes for the following Town of Anthony Council meetings. 1/8/2024, regular Town Council meeting.
Motion to approve minutes?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed, it's 5:0. Alright, 6.0, new business. 6.1, discussion, consideration, and action on an interlocal agreement between the Town of Anthony, Texas and the City of El Paso office of climate and sustainability for assistance and cooperation in the Leadership Steering Committee for the Regional Climate Initiative.
Thank you, Mayor Anet. We do have Anet on teams joining us. Anet, you can be again. I also have the power to find where council and the audience can be.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Hello, everyone. Once again, Anet Cuguetes, I'm the Director of the Rio Grande Council of Governments. And we come for you today for your consideration to join the Leadership Steering Committee. I think the most advantageous part of this request is that there is no fiscal impact to Town of Anthony. None of us are asking for your funds. So we would just like to ask for your participation. There are significant amounts of funding that have become available through the federal government. And one of them is coming through the Environmental Protection Agency. And so the City of El Paso is looking to be the lead organizer for this steering committee. But they are asking for the participation and involvement from all of the communities within El Paso as well as Huntsville County. And so the council government has been assisting in lighting up these interlocal agreements with various city councils to request for their interest and participation in this initiative. And so we, and Fernando will be able to speak more to this, but at this point in time, all of the municipalities except for Clint are agreeing to become members of this Leadership Steering Committee. Clint is looking to have this as an agenda item at their February 12 meeting. And then Socorro is looking at theirs being on February the 2nd. But just wanted to let you know about this initiative because there is a lot of involvement from the communities because of it. And so I will now turn over to Fernando Berhano. And Fernando is the Senior Climate Program Manager of the City of El Paso under the Community and Human Development Department. So Fernando, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Anet. Thank you, Mayor, Town Council, for your committee to present this evening. And as Anet was saying, there are multiple opportunities related to climate. And we're working on the Climate Action Plan for the whole region, for the whole El Paso County and Huntsville County. And this is why we're bringing this interlocal agreement to be part of this Leadership Steering Committee. You can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And there is a very imminent funding opportunity for projects that is due on April 1st. And this is part of the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, CPRG Phase 2. And this is why we are bringing this interlocal as well. This is a funding opportunity from the EPA as well. And it will plan programs and projects from $2 million up to $500 million. So if we find the correct product or projects for the region, we are eligible to get $500 million in grant money for projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the region. Next slide, please. What is this Leadership Steering Committee that we are asking you to be part of, or the Town of Anthony to be part of? This is an institutional interagency committee that is going to be maintaining transparency and collaboration in all things climate, both for climate action planning and the implementation of projects. And as we call, as Anet mentioned, sorry, all municipalities and counties are being presented with this interlocal. And so far, all of them and the MPO have agreed to be part of this steering committee. But this committee is going to be working with what we call Level 2 and Level 1 stakeholders. Level 2 being entities like academia, utilities, foundations, entities of that nature that need to be involved in these conversations as well. And Level 1 stakeholders, the most important ones probably is the community. All this work and all these applications need to have the community involved as per EPA requirements, but also because we think it's the right thing to do. Next slide, please. And finally, these are the points that you would be agreeing with this interlocal agreement. It's basically support, supportive climate efforts on data gathering, identification of projects, naming a person of contact for being part of this Leadership Steering Committee. But probably right now, because of time, the most important part might be that we do need an MOA, a memorandum of agreement, to be eligible for those dollars under CPRG Phase 2. And that's mentioned on the guidelines by the EPA. And that's why we've been asking all the partners to sign these agreements. And that's a very good summary of this program, why we're asking this. And if you have any questions, you have to answer those.
Council, I do want to mention, Henry, I would do the agreement and everything was good.
And just for the council, you know, in Texas, we call these interlocal agreements. And they're referring to it as an MOA, which is effectively, you know, just different terminology for this.
And then council, the life to mention of contact. Fernando, will this be like mayor or be a preferred employee? How does that work?
That will be, that will be your decision. We are, yeah.
Just to allow that, this falls within my specific specialty in the House of Education. So I wouldn't mind representing the town if you all choose to go.
So how often are you going to meet?
That's a good question. We have a meeting today. We are meeting now probably more than we're going to meet in the future because of that deadline that is coming soon in March 1st and April 1st. But we don't expect a lot of time commitment from our partners, probably maximum once a month. I would say even every other month.
If I may ask, Council, Fernando, what precisely is the point of contact going to be doing?
So it would be similar about what you have been doing, communicating with us, bringing this interlocal to your council. And if we need any help in data collection from Anthony that you have access to, or once we go and do outreach in your community, we definitely would love to have you involved. But also, we think we need your involvement because of your knowledge of your community.
Thank you.
So our commitment. And if I may? Yes. I'm sorry. And so at the meeting today, one of the items or the most pressing item that was mentioned was that the community start identifying potential projects to roll into the Climate Action Plan. And there's criteria that has to be met, but in discussions, there was a conversation where there was an assumption made that Anthony had applied to the Safe Schools program and you all had done some preliminary work for that initiative. And if that did not get funded ultimately, that kind of project would still be potentially a viable project to include into the Climate Action Plan. So it'd be good, so when you're asking about what level of commitment, even just having a sit down, whether that's with myself or with Fernando, just kind of talking about some of the projects that you've been attempting to initiate? Because you may already have some projects that are fairly far along in terms of what your intentions are. And that can be something that can be rolled into the Climate Action Plan. Is that correct, Fernando, or is there anything else you would want to add to that?
Yeah, you're right. And this point information, we're asking for projects is not a lot. It's just a few paragraphs, what's the intention of the project, the timeline, any cost estimate that you may have. And that's how we're going to select those projects for hopefully that second phase of the actual implementation dollars.
So when does the second phase start? So this first phase is four years, you said, right?
So these first product that we need to submit is due March 1st. And the implementation dollars due date is April 1st. So any projects that we want to submit for that implementation grant needs to be included on that first deliverable on March 1st. That's why we're moving so fast.
So let me get this straight. So if we wanted to build sidewalks so kids could walk to school safely, securely, et cetera, then we would join up with you and we don't have to qualify for a grant? You guys apply for the grant and we can get funded if it meets all of the criteria?
Yes, if selected, if selected at the end to be the selected project for the application, you are correct. I want to mention that this is the first climate-related opportunity for implementation of projects. We are expecting more opportunities in the upcoming years. So even if we don't get awarded projects in this first program, we are expecting multiple opportunities in the future for implementation.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then the other part that I wanted some clarification on is, so you're only asking commitment of our time and some work together, helping that day?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Well, I think you were asking about the staff time that would need to be allocated for under this agreement. Is that right?
Yeah, so all you're asking of us is that we commit some time to you and gather data for you so that you can submit that as part of the grant that you're going to be applying for?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. There is no commitment in terms of dollars and even the interlocal, it's a non-binding one. So if any party is not happy with the agreement in the future, hopefully not, I think we're going to have a good partnership, but the agreement can be pursued and just not be part of the steering committee if you go to do that.
And then one of the things to mention, which I think is helpful in terms of the potential projects or as you're thinking about these, Fernando mentioned that there were five areas of concentration. So that included transportation, building, it also included water, wastewater. And then the last one, what am I missing, which is the last one, Fernando?
Agriculture and land use, the preservation of agriculture land or unused land for carbon sake. So those five, any projects under those five sectors are eligible under this program. Do you have any plans on transportation? Do you have any plans on your municipal buildings or street lights, things of that nature? All those things are eligible.
And then I know that you all are, you know, doing a really heavy focus on your water and wastewater. So there might be some opportunities there as well that you can look into. And again, the way that you submit the application, it's not even application. It's very, it'll be very straightforward. It won't take up a significant amount of time. We just have to make sure that it meets the criteria to EPA so that we can get included in the plan. I have another question. Say that you identify, because it says on here, support the identification of measures to reduce air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions that could be implemented in the upcoming years. So this committee would be coming up with solutions to reduce the air pollution and the greenhouse gases. Do you have authority or would it require the council to vote on any of this, of the ideas you think we need to implement?
Yeah, so all, when it says measures, that's the name that the federal government is using for projects. So all the projects under these programs need to reduce those emissions and reduce pollutants. So we are gonna, the City of El Paso has hired a consultancy team and that team is going to help the committee of the region on the identification of all those projects.
Do you have a name on that company already?
The name of the company?
Yes, the consultants.
Sorry, I'm having trouble listening. AECOM, AECOM. It's a company that has developed many of these plans in the past. And we just started working with them, I would say, two weeks ago. So, yeah, they're already in board, they are leading these efforts. And they have a local presence as well. They've been here for 25 years. But they are being supported by their team mainly from Dallas.
So they will be the consultant. So if they decided that we needed to do something, implement some program here to reduce?
No, that's, that would be your call. They won't decide, obviously, what you have or you don't have to do. They're going to help out with what you already have in mind for Anthony or for the region. So it's, in any case, it's always your call, which projects to pursue or not pursue.
And I think it's important to mention that if our smaller municipalities do not participate in terms of potential projects, then most likely what will happen is that you'll be seeing projects that are primarily in the City of El Paso because they're not going to miss out on this opportunity. But the council government, our position being regional, looking at opportunities to collaborate, I do see this as a really positive door for all our smaller communities because the City of El Paso really is making that outreach to ensure that you all have a seat at the table to potentially look at how you want to address your climate needs. And this is the first step. So who's making the decision as to which projects get selected?
So that's going to be a decision made by the committee, by the Leadership Steering Committee, following criteria from EPA's guidelines. So the main criteria, the actual reduction in emissions. But there are multiple criteria, like if there is any other mandatory thing that we need to comply with is that these projects need to be lacking any other funding source. But there are multiple criteria. Another one important is that these projects need to benefit low-income and disadvantaged communities. So if an enterprise does not meet that criteria, it's not eligible under the program.
Is that a good move?
If Mayor and Council, if that motion could include who's going to be designated for the contact?
Thank you, if I may, and put them up.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Alright, motion passed, it's 5:0.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Alright, 6.2, discussion, consideration, and action on the 2024 polling place agreement between El Paso County Elections Department and the Town of Anthony, Texas.
Council Mayor, this is a standard agreement that I bring every year. It's just pretty much explaining to make the town hall decide location for early election and voting site. I did put on the council actions form the dates and Henry also reviewed it.
I just have one quick question. So we're going to have, on the, yeah. We have elections, five years on the 28th also?
No, May 4th, just our little.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because it says May 4th, we're running elections in May 4th.
Yes, we're May 4th, we're going to form election. We're going to form. But it's just in detail of the other.
Mayor and Council, I'm not finished reviewing these because I got these Friday, so. So but generally, they tend to be pretty standard, but I'll, so as long as you all can pass it, subject to, you know, moderate even, it should be finished with, you know, over here in the next couple of days or so and get back to that. But I don't anticipate them, there being any issues. So I'll make the motion, make it subject to the city attorney or county attorney approval.
So the only time we're going to use this building would be for May 4th? Of the elections? This is the only time?
No, the council action form has all the dates.
For everything, but?
So the dates of the election and early voting dates, so I don't have those. So. Which regularly, they're from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the election day and early voting, there's different scales. Just a motion.
A motion to approve with the approval, it's subject to for town attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion passed, it's 5:0.
Thank you, Council.
No problem. Alright, 7.0, reports. 7.1, finance, Councilman Weeks.
Jessica, did the review of her last meeting, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, okay. Perfect. 7.2, streets, Councilman Chavez.
I don't have anything, but you said, anything on when we're going to start exactly for those couples?
No, so this is at the moment where short-staffed two employees. And we have been dealing with a lot of emergencies on the water and sewer side. Because of that, we haven't had a chance. We have, we already located forty couples, so we plan on, this is, start this completely, pero we're pending on people. We need at least five men group to start putting the couples. Pero, I certainly get, get like one more employee, we'll be set to start the patching. So I'll tell you by the beginning of February.
Alright, perfect, excellent. Thank you for that. 7.3, municipal court, Mayor Cortez Alphado.
Municipal court, let's see. This has spent, the court collected $22,000, $128 and $49 sets. Goes to the court. Also submitted the monthly report from the police department. And the thing that stand out for this particular, last month was basically the, again, the motor vehicle accidents were eight in the town, family violence cases were seven. And we're looking at, again, driver's licenses and no insurance for 85. So there's a lot of people driving around Anthony with a license and no insurance. And that's all I have to report. Also, we have a total arrest, we have eight felonies, nine sinners, and total citations were 422 and then 1248 cases. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Alright, 7.4, parks, Councilwoman Cotes.
We didn't have a lot to report there, it's going to find the parts of good. Will you tell me something today?
Yeah, so there's a new municipal court on our municipal park. Let's get in some of this. So this is, go enjoy it. In other vehicles, we have been working side by side with Anthony IUD to do some work on the baseball field. We, so far, we have already repainted the inside and the outside of the restroom. We installed new toilets and new sinks. Aside from that, we've been working on the overall maintenance of the parks.
You're doing a good job.
Neat, that's awesome. I like that, that's really great. It's a good job.
I will say, definitely, if you can get there early, because Isael is telling me that it does get taken quickly. He went to go and play and he was unfortunate, he was unable to play on the new court himself.
So.
Alright, so 7.6, water and sewer, Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes, Isael and his crew, let's see, they cleared up some sewer clogs, one by the rolling smoke on Saturday, and they had to be there working on Sunday on grease traps, clogings. They needed to be, we need to figure out some way to have those grease traps inspected or checked on. Do we have any?
Yes, we're actually working on that one right now. We're increasing that from our codes.
Who doesn't?
Our codes, John, you got it?
Okay, you're the one to do it. And then there was also a sewer clog at the elementary. And we're not sure if the town crew is supposed to clean that up or not. Do we have any ordinances that clarify when our people are supposed to clear those up? If they're in the easement, if they're away from the main house?
Councilor Stevens, we, the town home responsible puts in the public right of ways, anything from the private property line in, that's the property owner's responsibility. So if it's, I mean, that's, you know, if it's in there in that private property, then they have to, the homeowner, the property owner has to, you know, fix this.
So from the main line to the right of way?
No, no, from the main.
From where the line attaches to the main line, that's, ours is only the main line. The rest, the rest going into the scope should be, is the scope. The rest, the rest going into the school should be, is the school's situation. So our guy should have been up there working on that line. Because I saw, I saw where the line is, where they dug up, and it's on the, it's part of the school property. I don't think we should have been working on that line.
So that's the confusion. Is there an ordinance that states all of this? If it's the right of way that they're supposed to work on, or if it's only the main line?
Yeah, but there doesn't have to be an ordinance because it's private property and if the town works on somebody's property, they're trespassing on that property, right? And the town should also not be bestowing a benefit upon a private property owner by going and fixing their sewer holes.
So the right of way, ten feet, is that part of the...
I guess I'm trying to understand what you mean by right of way, can't be the...
Yeah, so I guess the confusion was, it was not on the main line. So then, they should not have worked on anybody's if it's not on the main line?
If it's not on, if it's not located on the town property or the public right of way, the or an easement that belongs to the town, then it's not the town's responsibility.
Okay, is that written somewhere, or is that...
Again, it's, it's, it's the law on, you know, you'd be encroaching on somebody, you know, trespassing on somebody's property. And not only that, but you'd be bestowing a benefit if you go on there. It's like going to your property and replacing your sewer line, it's an older home. Yeah, sure, you'd like it, but you know what I'm saying, then that would have to be done for every property and that's bestowing a benefit on your property, which is not a satisfactory bylaw.
Okay, so there was confusion about that. And so it was performed to, so I don't know what the remedy is. Do you send a bill to Anthony IUD or you just drop it?
The thing is, not only that they do it, but the town paid for the motor reader to go to the campus.
Excuse me, I don't know what we're talking about.
It sounds like that happened on a school property.
But several councils think too, so...
It's just like I said, that there was a clog on the, a sewer line clog, and our crew went in there and cleaned it up, but it was a few feet from the main line. So there's confusion, and they should work on it or not. So they aired the side of caution, like disprecaution.
I mean, if there was confusion as to whether that was on the town property, your right of way, then, you know, obviously, then a inadvertent statement had been made without the intention. You know, but generally, for example, had they know where the right of way ends and it's inside of there and they determined that that's where the clog is, and they have to report to the private property owner, in this case, I would do the school, saying, I'm sorry, can I help you with this on your side of the property line?
Then it's something that's I need to address.
But yes, I think that was a confusion, you said, right? Because they said they've done it all the time before?
Well, eh, the issue is that we got a call last week saying that there was a sewer clog on the school on Sixth and Elm Street, between Elm Street and High Park. The street on Sixth Street in between the middle school and elementary school is fencing, but it's still Sixth Street. So we have an eight-inch line that runs through the school. Eh, it runs through the fencing street, which is also, it has been converted into a parking lot, but it also, it is a main. So it is on, I don't know if it's on school property, because it was a street at one point, but it is fencing. So we were following a line that, based on the data that we got, we believed it was a gaping main. So when we opened the ground, eh, we realized that the problem wasn't or main, but the tap in which the school was connected, eh, due to the high volume of water, we decided to fix it right there and then, este, without thinking on who's gonna be lying. So once that got fixed, we got the questions, so.
And Counselor, from now, from what I'm hearing, then obviously, if it's the main, then there's very likely an easement. And if it's on our easement, which, I mean, if it's the main running through the school, I would be shocked if there is no easement on that property where that main is running. So if it is on an easement, which it should be, then that is obviously the town's responsibility. But then as to what he described, then again, you're, if you have any necessity, you know.
And my question is, how come we hired Robero Hutter for the cameras if we have cameras?
Eh, the camera that we have is not small enough to feed through an eight-inch pipe. And we, when we started to apply the pipe, eh, our chair brought down.
Excuse me, Ismael, I'm gonna recommend that we have this on our workshop on Monday because everybody knows a whole bunch of information that I don't know how anybody knows. And Ismael seemed a little confused as to why this was being talked about too, so why don't we talk about this on our workshop? Because now we need to have an answer because we did this in an open meeting. And I don't know if you three know anything about this. So let's do this in our workshop.
Sounds good, so...
Because right now, we're speculating, guessing.
Keep them walking. So for reports, we'll just keep it to reports, not questions.
And on this topic to the workshop.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would ask Counselor Weeks and Mayor, Council, that, you know, it's high and full, you know, there should be a plat, actually, so.
I don't...
As to be able to answer your question.
I get it, but we don't need to tell him how to do his job. He knows how to do his job. He just doesn't know how to answer a question that's being brought up in reports that he wasn't asked about outside of this, so...
I know that wouldn't look good, but we'll discuss it during that, that workshop. Okay, so to finish up, there was a water leak on Sixth and Poplar, there was a sewer tap fixed. Plumbing was connected all the way to the property line on another one. Let's see, he has three people, two people out, one has been out for a month and one has been out three months. Hopefully, that'll get resolved. And a customer made a complaint about water overflow, and we will also need to address that on our workshop. On how to, how to solve the problem of flushing the well.
That's already taken care of, that's administrative, don't worry about that. That was already dealt with today, so. Alright, so seven point seven, administration, myself. A lot of new things are coming. Key factor that I want everybody to know is the Leap Year event. That is in full swing. You can see the billboards have gone up. A lot of advertising is going out now. We've had an overwhelming response from a number of vendors and everything of that nature, so that is a key factor. So by all means, if you guys also want to promote it, tell, you know, everybody and the brother, so.
There's a flyer, right?
Yes, we do. Ms. Val, do you have the...
So if I may add, all this information is on Facebook and the town website and also on the app that is presented by Anthony Police Department. I also want to encourage Council to help me promote that app because I am posting a lot of the extensive work, extensive information. So on that app, have I seen it?
On the GoGov, yes, indeed. So the GoGov is a good, good source of town information, so if you're within the town, you want to download the app, which will be brought up, but yes, that is a good one.
So on the website, Council, I did add a couple buttons to direct you to the Facebook page. Also, this app, you just download the app. I also have the events from the Chase and Sunset, take all the registration, take it to the list as well. Also, the Leap Year, I have the link there for you all to show anybody that's interested. And also the food truck park, we're still also gathering trucks to have some list to be started. We only have three interested so far, so.
Or, well, we had a large...
How many are we going for? How many trucks are we wanting to have?
Eleven to thirteen.
Eleven.
This one?
So yes, Gina had provided all of that information, but we can have that at our next report, which will be a little bit closer for us, so. Alright, so eight point zero, town council will go into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.074. Personnel matters of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or charge against an officer or employee. The open meeting will be reconvened following the closed session, at which time, action, if any, will be considered. On eight point one, council will go into a closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties on police officers' promotion to the rank of sergeant for the Anthony Police Department. And the current time is 6:13.
And in the line, then Rebecca would turn off the...